Good morning and welcome to our Board of County Commission meeting on March 25th, 2025. I'm calling the meeting to order. Please join us as we receive our invocation from Hank Brighton-Cam, who's from the Humanist Chaplain and Celebrant. It's Hank's birthday today, too. And then followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Louis Jones, who's a U.S. Navy veteran. Good morning.
Good morning. Greetings from the Humanists of the Treasure Coast and happy spring. Indeed, Martin County is a wonderful place to live, raise a family, have a business and work, recreate, and to just marvel in the open majestic places on land and water. We as a diverse but united community are thankful for the good fortune to be in the land of the free and the home of the brave. We particularly give honor to those who have given of themselves and some their precious lives in the service of our country, the United States of America. Each one of our leaders on the dais this morning have received the high calling and trust of our citizens to be commissioned to use their unique sets of talents, vision, deliberative skills, and stewardship to maintain what has been provided by those who have gone before and also to improve the good to better and the better to best. We thank you for your selfless service. In every county in the country with an outstanding commission, there is a professional staff who carries out that vision and standard. Like the commission, the staff just wants to make good things happen. So Departments of Martin County, Administration, County Attorney, Growth Management, Parks and Rec, Airport Services, Fire and Rescue, IT, Public Works, Building, General Services, Library, and my favorite after a career of 42 years, Utilities and Solid Waste. We, the people, see what you do and appreciate the fruits of your labor. Keep up the great job. So esteemed commission and staff, the community gives you our encouragement and support to meet the high standards that are expected of you in this high vocation to which you have been called and to which you have freely accepted. We wish you the best of everything good in each and every endeavor of your life. We say all these things in the name of everything that is good, virtuous, and true. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And afterwards, could you tell us a bit about your service?
Oh, no. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with justice, at all. Well, there's not a whole lot to say. I was born and raised in Melbourne, and my dad was a Navy veteran, aviator, World War II. And when it came time to get out on my own, I decided that quickest, best way to do it was join the service. So, you know, I've told this story before. The first place they sent me after all my training was they sent me to an aircraft carrier out of Jacksonville who went to Europe, which was a nice cruise. We came back and they said, okay, now we're going to Vietnam. I thought that was someplace in the Caribbean. I never heard of it. I was hoping it was someplace in the Caribbean because I'd never heard of Vietnam. But, you know, I got over there and we had joyful time. Being in the Navy initially was, especially aboard the aircraft carrier, was a safe adventure, safer than some of the guys that were on the ground in the woods, in the jungles and so forth, rice paddies. But being young and dumb, I guess you might say, there are other things that go with that, but we'll leave that alone. I volunteered when they needed somebody in my specialty, which was radio and communications and coding and decoding. I volunteered to go ashore at the Naval Base in Cameron. And I made a worse decision even than that because we were getting attacked there by volunteering to go up the Mekong Delta. I thought that sounded nice, going on small boats. Yeah, it's not so good. So anyway, you're very exposed. And Tim was in a similar situation. I don't know, did you volunteer? You just were drafted?
No, I volunteered.
Oh, you were dumb, too. All right. But anyway, you know, you don't know these things. These are things you learn the hard way. But so when we came back, you know, we met up with a bunch of other guys. And in this county, we have a very good group, a diverse group of guys who are in all the different services. And we're all there for a common cause, which is to help veterans and their families get the benefits that they deserve, that they earned, that their spouses or themselves earned. And it's an uphill battle sometimes. It's amazing to me that 50 years after the fact, the VA and others have finally decided that there was some problems with Agent Orange. This is after how many hundreds of thousands of people have died as a result of it. So these are some of the frustrations we deal with. But nonetheless, in spite of all that, we hang together and we give each other support. And speaking of support, we really appreciate the support that the County Commission and all the citizens of Martin County give us. It's very, very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. There are two additional items this morning. Consent 15 is a renewal in First Amendment of 800 interlocal agreement with Palm Beach County for public safety radio communication. And Consent 16, which is adoption of proclamations commending Charlotte Arledge, Charlotte DiNuccio, Allison Gordon, Madison Thomas, and Lauren Kelly upon the achievement of Eagle Scout. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Commissioner Heatherington?
I will move approval of the agenda with additional items consent 15 and 16.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, aye. Opposed, that motion passes unanimously. The first proclamation will be a presentation by our property appraiser, Jenny Fields. Welcome. We're happy to have you here.
Mind if we both say?
Sure.
Well, thank you so much. Is this on? Can y'all hear?
Yes.
Thank you for inviting us, Commissioners. Good morning, Administrator Sarah. Thank you. With me today is our Chief Deputy Carl Anderson, and we are going to be talking a little bit about property damage. You know, last year, we were hit hard during Hurricane Milton with the tornadoes. We're going to touch a little bit on that. But really, we kind of want to share with you, what does property damage mean to you in terms of paying your taxes? So how does that? These are things that I think, you know, you need to understand. And so that's what we're going to share with you today. Let me just unpack this clicker. Okay. All right. So with that, I just want to say everything, everything that you see here, just like we always do when we're doing outreach and we go to speak to people, right on our homepage, you'll see three things, the eNews sign up, the Community Outreach Calendar, and the Schedule Speaker. Everything that you hear, if you want us to come speak to you, if you want to see the presentation that we're going to give you today, anything that you want, all these topics that we talk about, they're in all three of those. So if you have not seen that, or you see something that you want to learn more about today, these are tools that we encourage you to look up, and we're happy to come and talk to you about any of that. So with that, there's two things I want to talk to you about when we talk about property damage. Number one is you need to understand what is a date of assessment. So this is basically, in a nutshell, what the law says about when establishing property taxes. We are required by law to reassess property values every year at market value considering allowable cost of sale based on conditions as of January 1 of that tax year. So if you look at it, this is an example. If you look at this timeline and you see where the red, the orange star is, that's January 1. So if you look at January 1, now imagine taking a picture of the market, everything that occurred on January 1, and fast forward all the way till August, when you get that trim notice, that proposed taxes that you see that you're going to have to pay, the proposed values, all of that is based on eight months prior on January 1. And again, fast forward all the way to November, when the tax bills are mailed from the tax collector's office, you're paying a bill based on 11 months prior, okay? So that's the magical date. So, you know, a lot of times, people will say, Jenny, what's the market doing today? We're looking at everything that happened last year right now because we're forbidden from looking at anything that occurred after January 1, 2025. So people may not realize that. So a couple of the things is in order to qualify for any of the exemptions, you have to own and reside in the home on January 1. So if you don't buy the property until today, you're not even going to be entitled to your own exemptions until next year because you didn't own it on January 1. It's a January 1 date. And then there's some other things listed here, and I won't take a lot of the time. But the second thing I want to talk about is new construction. In the state of Florida, there's either two types of properties. Either you have the home set exemption, so your assessed value is capped, and that's a whole nother presentation. But just, you know, shortly, your assessed value, which is based on, which is what your taxes are based on, is limited from increasing no more than 3% a year. However, that doesn't apply to new construction. So again, when we're adding, let's say you put on a pool, or build a house, or anything like that, for us to add the value of that item to the tax roll, it has to be completed on January 1. So if your home is not completed, it didn't get the final certificate, CO, if it wasn't completed till the end of January, in November, when you get the bill, it's going to be for a vacant lot. So you basically got a year for free because it wasn't done on January 1. So that January 1 date is super, super important. Now, the next thing is how do you add new construction? When I say that the 3% cap, okay, and if you have the home set exemption, you're capped at 3%. But every other property in the state of Florida is capped at 10%, okay? Whether you're a vacant lot or a strip shopping mall, they get a 10% just like homesteaded property owners gets a 3%. So when we're looking at that assessed value, this is just a really quick example of if you look at the market value on this property last year at $500,000, and let's say they've lived there for a while, so their assessed value, which has been capped, is only at 280. Well, this year's CPI is only 2.9%. So your cap cannot go up more than 3, but it can be less. This year, it was 2.9%. So now, if you look at going into the 2025 year, you can see the market value this year is up 50,000 because we've added your pool now. It was done on January 1. But if you look at the cap, we're going to go from last year at 280,000, we're going to add the 2.9%, which is the 288,120, then we add the value of the pool at 50. So your new assessed value for 2025 would be 338,000, okay? New construction is not subject to that cap in the first year it goes on the roll. So that's the second thing I wanted to stress to you as we go through this, how do we do property damage? So with that, what is catastrophic property damage? Well, perth La Florida statutes, a catastrophic event means an event of misfortune or calamity that renders improvements uninhabitable. Examples of catastrophic weather events, which typically affect multiple properties, which we witnessed last year, is your hurricanes, your tornadoes, wildfires, floodings, things like that. There are situations where you might have a catastrophic event, but it's just to your home, whether it's an unintentional fire or water damage, or maybe you had structural damage for whatever reason. That is also a catastrophic event. So mindful of that January 1 date, the law says that should you have a catastrophic event after January 1, there's literally nothing that we can do to your value that year because it occurred after January 1. That's just the way the law is written. Now, there are a couple of things to note, that if you do have a calamity in your value, the value will be adjusted in the year following that. So on January 1 of the following year, we will do an inspection of your home, we'll see how much damage is left, and we can adjust the value at that point in the following year. But for that year specifically, there's nothing we can do to the value because it's as of January 1, the condition of the home. If you do have a catastrophic event on your homesteaded property, you have up until five years to commence the construction on that, to rebuild it. But you do have five years, so you don't want to move away and then come back. But we will ask you to fill out an affidavit and intent. It just lets us know that you are planning to come back because this is your homesteaded property. And then the third thing is there is a 110% rebuild rule. Now, this rule is for all properties, not just your homesteaded 3% cap property. But let's say you have a catastrophic event on commercial property, okay? The 110% rebuild rule basically says you can rebuild exactly what you had plus 10% more, and it would be covered under your cap. So it would be covered as if nothing ever, as if you never built. And just to kind of walk through that, I want to show you how this would work. So if you completed the construction within five years of the rebuild rule, this is, let's say the damage happened in 2024, your market value was 500,000. And again, we're looking at your assessed value, which is the 280. We're going to come forward the cap, that's your 3% home stay cap, so it's 2.9. So now, if you look at 2025, you rebuilt your home. Maybe you built 10% more, okay? We're going to value that home and the property at 780,000. But if you look at the calculation under this statute that protects you, the 280 will go up to 2.9%, which is it is allowed to do, that's the assessment limitation. But where we added in the pool value before, which is the 50,000 after the cap, the amount of that new house is zero. So your final assessed value is still 288,120. So your value would be as if you never even built a brand new home. So there are protections should you suffer a catastrophic event on your property. You can rebuild, and it would be protected in the following year when you do rebuild. Now, what does that have to do with your taxes? So back years ago, when the Surfside condo collapsed, and then following that, there were a couple of years, we had catastrophic hurricane damage along the West Coast. Basically, the law got changed last year, I think it was last year, right? Last year, the law got changed that basically said, because what was happening is when that condo collapsed, all of those property owners that didn't even have a home, they had tax bills came due in November for a condo that didn't even exist. So because of that, and then they saw the same compounding issue with the hurricanes, their homes were destroyed, they knew that something had to change. Well, instead of changing the date of assessment, which affects so many things, now they implemented where you can actually apply for a refund of taxes. Now, there's a couple of things that you need to note. Number one, they did not make this universal. So it is only on residential property. So should you have a catastrophic event on a shopping plaza or industrial building, this refund of taxes does not apply. It has to be residential. The second, the way they wrote the law was that it has to be uninhabitable for 30 days, minimum of 30 days. And then it applies only to the living area. So if you had a catastrophic event and it destroyed your garage, that would not be considered eligible for a refund of taxes because it wasn't the primary living area of the home. And then the last thing, you have to make application with our office by March 1 following the catastrophic event. So you would come in, and then there's a calculation. And this is what the form looks like. And, you know, we will help you fill it out. There's certain documentation that we're going to need to request from you just to prove that it was uninhabitable, how many days, and so forth. But we'll work with you. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Carl because Carl's going to really delve, dive into how this event happened last year in your district, Commissioner Hurd. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Carl, and he can get into how that worked.
All right. Thank you, Jenny. Good morning, everyone. My name is Carl Anderson, Chief Deputy with the Property Appraisers Office. So this morning, I'd like to give you an update on our office's response to Hurricane Milton's tornado damage that property owners sustained last year on October 9, 2024. I'm also going to provide an update on the numbers of the calamity tax refund that Jenny was just referring to. So to start off, I just wanted to show a slide. This is the county's damage assessment map, the latest information from it. On the right-hand side, there's a table showing the various FEMA categories of damage. Destroyed, we had a total of, excuse me, 30 properties. Those are indicated in red. And FEMA defines those as uninhabitable, completely damaged and gone, or requires a total reconstruction of the building. We had in orange, 31 major damaged properties. FEMA defines those as significant structural issues or severe water damage, which is 18 inches or higher within the essential living area of the property or of the home. And then we had a total of 92 minor damaged properties. Those are shown in yellow on the map. They define those as limited structural issues or water damage. That doesn't render the home uninhabitable. And then affected in blue, we had a total of 285, and that's minimal damage. So as you can see, the damage started in Doubletree and the Preserve off Sea Branch, hit Mariner Village, then crossed over US 1, impacted Mariner Sands, Salerno Estates, Newman Rovia, Dixie Park, and then over A1A, impacted Sandy Ridge and into Rocky Point. So our office's role in damage assessment, the property appraiser assists with the county damage assessment response by having our office staff available to meet up at the Building Department during the windshield phase of the damage assessment. So we team up, and there's usually two per vehicle, one driver, and then one person doing the data input, going down the roads. They're assigned to an area in the county. And then the data input will drop points based on the FEMA categories. So it's meant to be a very quick and efficient process. Our office also does a desktop review of all the photos that come in from that process to verify that the FEMA categories are accurate to try to improve the accuracy of the project. And then that's what the county takes to FEMA to determine the FEMA declaration and funding. What our office then does is we export that data, and we upload it into our system so that we can use it for assessment and property evaluations in the following tax roll year. We also use it to send out informational letters to the impacted property owners and notify them of that new tax refund process. So the exported data is imported into our CAMA system. That's our computer automated mass appraisal software. It's our enterprise software where we store the information on all 95,000 parcels in the county, along with the 12,000 tangible personal property accounts. It includes our valuation models. So our appraisers can use this information when they're determining valuations for the following year. We also link in the windshield phase pictures into our GIS as well. And then the week after the event, we sent out field appraisers to do a thorough inspection. That windshield phase is only to do a front picture of the house and to make a quick assessment. So we send out our field appraisers to do a thorough front and back inspection if the property owner's available, and they're there, and they'd like us to come in. We take pictures internally to get a preemptive idea of the damage of the property and notifying them of that tax refund process. So on November 1, we mailed out, we mailed out letters to the categories that were major and destroyed, and only residential properties. So this was a total of 49 letters that went out. Forty of those were homestead letters, nine of those were non-homestead letters. In those letters, we explained how the damage would impact our 2024 tax bill, which would only be through that tax refund process that Jenny explained earlier, because it happened after January 1, 2024. We also notified them that any damage on January 1, 2025, we would be able to utilize in the upcoming assessment in the 2025 tax roll. We also provided information about the refund process, what documents we needed, such as photos, utility bills, any kind of supporting information from FEMA, insurance companies, permit information that would show that the property was uninhabitable for more than 30 days. We also explained how a homesteaded property could maintain their homestead if the house was not on the property anymore, if it was completely demolished. They'd have to file an affidavit of intent, which they're attesting to reoccupy the property immediately after it's repaired or rebuilt. And then we also provided information on the 110% calamity rebuild rule. Yep. Sorry about that. So those letters, the non-homestead letters that we sent out is essentially identical to the homestead letters. We just didn't include information about the affidavit of intent and having to attest to reoccupy, to maintain the homestead. So the response we received on November to February, there are a total of 21 tax refund applications that were submitted back to us based on the letters. We also had a lot of email correspondence, phone calls, and meetings with individual property owners, some of them outside of those main areas of damage that were requesting a refund application as well. We also did follow-up field inspections shortly after January 1, 2025, to get the status of all the properties for the upcoming 2025 tax roll year. And then in February, we mailed out 26 reminder letters to the major and destroyed properties that we didn't originally receive an application from. So which broke down to about 20 homestead and six remaining non-homestead. And we're also planning on sending out letters to the 92 minor damaged properties to determine what was, if there's any damage on their property as of January 1, 2025, so we can determine if there's any adjustments that need to happen for this year's tax roll.
And I will say, the minor ones, it's important for people to let us know because even if they were just having to rescreen their pool cage, you wouldn't want that to go on as a new construction item if you're replacing it because it was destroyed by an event. You would normally be able to replace that and not see the increase in taxes. So if it was damaged as a result of the storm, it's important for you to communicate that with our office. Because if we just see a permit come through, we don't know that you didn't do that intentionally. You just wanted to take it down and put up something new. So I would say communicate that if you have something like that.
So on this ladder, the total numbers from the tax refund applications we received, we had a total of 27 refund applications that came to $15,783, and 22 of those were homestead properties at $11,248, and five were non-homestead properties. So we received the applications and processed them. When they're approved, we send them to the tax collector, and then they distribute the refunds. And then here is just a rough understanding of the formula to determine the tax refund. Essentially, the best way to understand it, if you, for a property, you first have to determine the total market value of the improvement. So if half of the total market value is the structural improvement value, and let's say it's uninhabitable for the entire year, then they would receive a 50% refund on their taxes, since half of the total market value is from their building. So if it's only uninhabitable for half of the year, it would be 50% of the 50%. They would receive a 25% adjustment. All right, that concludes our update. Are there any questions?
Very interesting. Any questions? Thank you very much. Our next agenda item is proclamation declaring Vietnam War Veterans Day, and accepting this will be Mr. Jones.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Many of the brave men and women who served in Vietnam came home to a welcome unbefitting their dedicated service. Remembrances on Vietnam War Veterans Day are to ensure that this never happens again, and that our returning troops from current and future conflicts receive the full honor and respect that their noble and selfless service merits. The Board offers this remembrance on March 29 to those veterans as a commitment that they shall not be forgotten, but held in esteem for their service to their country and our nation. Mr. Jones?
Once again, I reiterate what I said before, that we really appreciate the support of the commission and the citizens of Martin County. You guys really, really do a lot for us to help us out and to help other veterans and their families. And that, everything we do has a chapter, along with all the other veterans organizations in the county, and the support that you give us with this Veteran Service Office is a great benefit to all of us. So once again, we really appreciate everything you do for us.
Thank you. Want to bring all the veterans into the well, maybe? Yeah, Laura, have them come in here. Yeah, it's easier this way. Let's come on in. Got a lot of folks. Yep. I promise I won't put this back up once you get in there. No, you have to stay for the whole meeting.
Just slow this, we can get everybody kind of, there we go. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Welcome home.
Chair heard, quick announcement, there's an event this weekend. The We Do Good 5K is a 5K race that's starting in Jock Leighton Park in Palm City this Saturday at 7:30 a.m. Anyone that's interested, it's a race over the Veterans Memorial Bridge. You can go to runsignup.com to re-register or register that morning. I'd also like to thank our staff. We fly the American flag over the Veterans Bridge several times a year, and this year, for the first time, we're adding Veterans, Vietnam Veterans Memorial Day. This week, we'll have the flags up as another honoring of their service. So if you're interested in the Vietnam Veterans 5K, the We Do Good 5K is this Saturday at Jock Leighton Park in Palm City, 7:30 a.m. Thank you. Thank you. Commissioners, if you will indulge me, I see that we have a contingent of important people from the Sheriff's Department here, including the Sheriff. Can we take care of that matter first?
Absolutely.
So that they can get back its department one. Yeah, Ms. Merly, please, please join us.
Stephanie Merly, Director of the Office of Management and Budget here, to go through our OMB item today with all the very important people. Our first item is permission to apply for the FY25 Alternative Water Supply Project Funding for the Floridin Well TFRO-8. Our Utilities and Solid Waste Department is requesting $2 million and $50,000 for the construction of the Tropical Farms Water Treatment Plant Floridin Well and Raw Water Main. There is a match of $2 million and $50,000, and this is programmed within the Utilities Our second item is a permission to apply for the FY25 Alternative Water Supply Project Funding for Floridin Well NRO-5. This is a grant application for $3 million and $50,000 for constructing a North Water Treatment Plant Floridin Well and Raw Water Main. There is a grant match required of $3 million and $50,000, which is also programmed in the Utilities Solid Waste CIP. Item number three is a permission to apply for the FY24 Parks and Recreation Social Driver of Healthy Aging Grant. Our Parks and Rec Department is requesting a grant application of $17,500 to develop and advance strategies to increase social and intergenerational connectedness and improve healthy aging. There is no grant match required for this. Item number four is a permission to apply for the 2025 Waterways Assistance Program Grant for the renovation of the Jensen Beach Causeway. Parks and Rec is requesting the application of a $450,000 grant to fund the construction costs to replace the existing boat ramp and launch piers at Jensen Beach Causeway. A grant match of $450,000 is required, and is programmed within the Parks and Recreation Boat Ramp Program CIP. Item number five is a permission to accept the FDEP Martin County Gomez Community Petway Potable Water Service Project. This is a grant acceptance in the amount of $940,000 that will support the construction of a potable water service distribution system at the Gomez Petway Community of Hope Sound. There is no cash match required, but the Hope Sound CRA is contributing $200,000 to the project. Item number six is a permission to accept the FDEP Grant for Nutrient Reduction Technology. Our Environmental Services Division is requesting the acceptance of $523,325 that will fund a nano bubble ozone technology for nutrient reduction, and it will support Martin County's total maximum daily load TMDL sheet. There is no grant match required for this one. And the last item are other OMB items, the adjustments to the fiscal year 2025 budget to modify the FY25 budget to align revenues and expenditures. And there's a variety of items located within this. A is a budget resolution to allocate the unanticipated donation from the Riverside PUD. We are in receipt of a check for $115,000 for the Riverside PUD agreement, $30,000 to the Martin County Fire Rescue for fire traffic preemption, and $85,000 to Martin County Public Works Department to support the milling and resurfacing of Southwest Lost River Road. B is a budget resolution to allocate the contribution from the Preserve of Loblawi North PUD. We are in receipt of $16,000 that'll go towards the purchase of a traffic preemption device for Martin County Fire Rescue, and $10,000 to Martin County Public Works for construction upgrades at the intersection of Southeast Osprey and Dixie Highway. C is a budget resolution to allocate unanticipated contribution from the 7Js PUD. We are in receipt of $100,000 check to be allocated towards the construction and design of a proposed fire station in Western Palm City, and we are asking to amend the CIP sheet to recognize these revenues as well. D is the allocation of funds for fiscal year's 2025 salary adjustments. During our FY25 adopted budget, we included salary adjustments based on the Teamsters contract, which was $2.50 an hour, or 6%, which was ever greater. We place these funds in reserve, and this request is just to remove those funds from reserve and put them to all of the respective departments as approved. E is the Martin County Sheriff's Office request for funds for previously earmarked for future helicopter purchase. The Martin County Sheriff's Office, in collaboration with County Administration and OMB, has allocated funds from the return of their excess fees in their annual budget to support the down payment for a helicopter. The dedicated reserve has accumulated to 1.6, and a budget transfer from reserves in the amount of $894,173 is representing a 20% down payment for the Martin County Sheriff's Office, and they're here if you have any questions about that. F is budget resolution to increase the Florida opioid settlement funds. We have received our third year's allocation in the amount of $229,845 to be used to assist with opioid use and misuse intervention strategies, and we are just requesting a budget resolution to accept those funds into our budget. And last but not least is a budget resolution to recognize the reimbursement from the Village of Indian Town into the Building Department's operating budget. The Village has remitted a check in the amount of $50,000 to offset building official-related services on an as-needed basis based on the interlocal, and OMB is just requesting a budget resolution in order to recognize those revenues into the budget.
Thank you. Sheriff, we'd love to hear from you, as always.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners and County Administrator and Attorney. Thank you all for giving me a few minutes. I know you're busy, you get pulled in all different directions. But I think it's important to explain our position. I know there's been a change in the Sheriff's Office Administration. Sheriff Snyder retired, and I came in, and then there's been some Commissioner changes. But this has been going on for about the last eight years. About eight years ago, our chief pilot came to me, I was a lower-ranking individual in the Sheriff's Office, and said, Lieutenant, we have to do something with our aviation program. Up until that point, actually up until today, we had been flying Vietnam-era OH-58 helicopters that we got from a government program, a LSO program, and we, and our mechanics and our pilots have done a phenomenal job keeping those helicopters flying. But to put that in perspective, these gentlemen that were here earlier that just left, those helicopters were in service when they were serving. Now, they've gotten younger, but the helicopters have not gotten any younger. And, and, you know, we drive vehicles that are not that old, but our guys are still flying in the air with helicopters that are 50-plus years old. So it was a public safety concern, it was a safety hazard for our pilots. So we set in motion a plan to rebuild our aviation program, and that really started five years ago, when the then-commission stepped up and purchased the first helicopter and Airbus. And then, looking forward five years, which is now, we, we had been planning all along and trying to put money aside and talking with the Commissioners and, and planning to buy a second helicopter. So this is where we are today. A couple of questions that have been asked me. Commissioner asked a great question this morning already before I got up here. Why don't we lease the helicopters, like Fire Rescue does? And the answer to that is, we, we use those helicopters all the time for everything. We use them for surveillance, we use them for tracking people, we use them for catching migrants coming in on boats, we use them for putting out fires when Fire Rescue needs our assistance, we use them for search and rescue, we use them for a myriad of tasks. And if we were to lease a helicopter, the leasing companies, they limit the hours you put on them. We really do fly those helicopters at a moment's notice all the time. And thankfully, unlike Fire Rescue, they don't have to fly a lot, thankfully, because they're rescuing people. But we do fly, we probably fly about six hours a day at a minimum to service our residents here in the county. Another question's been asked to me is why two helicopters? And the saying in the industry is, unless you have two helicopters, you don't have an aviation program at all, because of the required maintenance that comes due on those aircraft. If any small thing is wrong with them, any type of leak, anything, those things are down clearly for the safety of our pilots and staff, and then the safety of people on the ground. So if you don't have two, you don't have a program. So we use those to keep, we use our helicopter, our aviation program, to stay cutting-edge here in Martin County, to facilitate all the needs of our county residents. We just went through a hurricane presentation. We use those right after the hurricane. Some of you Commissioners, I know County Administrator Donaldson flew to assess some of the damage. So we're always there, not just for the Martin County Sheriff's Office, but for the county as a whole, to make sure the needs are met in the, in the county. I'll stop talking. If you have questions, please fire away at me, so.
Questions for Sheriff Budenseek. Commissioner Heatherington.
I would just say that I think our aviation program is of value to taxpayers and the public safety initiatives of this county. It's amazing the tools that technology can provide to keep not only your workforce safe, but to keep our public safe. So I would gladly move approval for the entire OMB item, including all items.
Commissioner Vargas.
Sheriff, I have a question.
Yes.
Can you hear me? Yes, you mentioned about Vietnam-era helicopters, and then five years ago, the purchase of a helicopter from Airbus, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you still have those older helicopters in your possession?
Yes, so, so we have two, we, we originally had three OH-58s when we bought, when we purchased the Airbus. We kept, we downed one of the OH-58s, and we kept two, one for training, one for operational needs. So the, the training helicopter, we're still going to keep that helicopter until we absolutely can't fly it anymore. What we use that for are absolutely frightening tactics called auto-rotations, where you turn the helicopter off in the air, and you glide down, and, and you do hard landings. We're going to still use one of those old helicopters to train in and practice in until it's not usable at all. The other helicopter we're going to get rid of, we're going to take it offline. So we're only going to be flying operationally two Airbuses, the old one that we bought five years ago, and the new one that we're planning to purchase.
Okay, so, so, I'm trying to understand, so there are three older helicopters that you say you use, is that correct? Or you have in your possession?
Two.
Two?
Yes.
Okay, so you're going to keep one until you receive the new helicopter, is that correct?
No, we're gonna, so we have two old helicopters. As soon as we receive the new helicopter, one will be down, we're going to keep one old helicopter just for training purposes, not operational needs.
I understand, so you have two for operational and one for training?
Correct, yes.
Is that correct, the old one, until it can no longer function safely?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Any further questions? Thanks, Sheriff. There's a motion on the floor, there's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we will now go back to public comment. First request to speak for him I have is from Camden Duke. Ms. Duke will be followed by Casey Cass.
Cam Duke.
Cam.
Commissioner, may I make one quick announcement that came up? We found a credit card in the downstairs here this morning, and the last name on the credit card is Carlton. So if anybody in the audience with a last name of Carlton is missing a credit card, Ms. Donna Gordon has it here, or will get it to the, at the break, to the guards at the, at the main desk here. So, thank you.
Otherwise, we're going to use it towards the helicopter. Proceed, Mr. Duke.
Yes. Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Camden Duke. I am a junior in Martin County High School and a life scout, and working towards my Eagle rank. I am here today to advocate for bringing the Beach Bucket Foundation to Martin County to help protect our marine life and beaches. For anybody unsure what the Beach Bucket Foundation is, it provides beachgoers with free reusable buckets to collect litter along the shoreline. This encourages healthy oceans and brings awareness to conservation. Right now, Beach Bucket Foundation buckets are available in counties north and south of Martin County, but not here. As a community, we can take a proactive step in maintaining our environment by bringing this initiative to our county. As a 17-year-old life scout who's searching for Eagle project opportunities before I turn 18, I am eager to work with the Beach Bucket Foundation as part of my Eagle requirement. This would involve building collecting, collection stations, coordinating community and scout involvement, and focusing on bringing awareness on keeping our beaches clean. With our beautiful coastline and county being benefited by tourism, keeping our beaches clean benefits residents, marine life, and visitors. Partnering with the Beach Bucket Foundation aligns with our county's environmental values. I humbly ask for your support in allowing the Beach Bucket Foundation to be established in Martin County. I would love to work with county staff to identify locations for bucket stations and coordinate efforts to launch this initiative if the opportunity is presented. Thank you for your time and consideration. I look forward to the opportunity to collaborate on this project for the benefit of our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Next up is Casey Cass, followed by Tammy Mizota.
I'd like to sponsor the bucket for that program and then offer you a scholarship. Give me a call.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Casey Cass. I own Casco Companies, which is comprised of Casco Tools, DEB Industrial Coatings, Environmental Solutions, and Ground Excess. I employ many taxpaying residents in Martin County, and like all other business owners, I pay commercial property tax, residential property tax, ad valorem tax, sales tax, highway tax, and payroll tax. I also volunteer my time at no, with no compensation, as a vice chair on the Martin County Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and am a member of the Port Salerno Neighborhood Advisory Board. Casco Companies is also a member of Martin County Taxpayers Association and other organizations in the building industry and marine industries. Most importantly, I'm a member of Save Our Salerno, which is a 501 not-for-profit organization. Save Our Salerno seeks to maintain Port Salerno's cultural and environmental identity by advocating for development which respects community values and historic significance. SOS represents thousands of taxpaying residents, both in Port Salerno and Martin County. We are the people. Save Our Salerno vehemently opposes the purchase of 4070 Salerno Road at the purchase price proposed. A Martin County appraiser with 35 years of commercial and residential experience has provided an opinion that the appraisals provided are much, are as much as a quarter of a million dollars overvaluated. A quarter of a million dollars may not be a lot much to Martin County's overall budget, buying helicopters and things, but it is highly inappropriate, lacks transparency, and is outright disrespectful to the residents of Newman Rovia, who have been seeking sewer system for 15-plus years. A sewer system which would improve the water quality of the pocket and the quality of life for those residents. The appraisals provided did not acknowledge usability or markability, marketability due to the existing wetlands. No property or wetlands- No property or wetland surveys took place. One of the appraisals stated that a perceived value wants improvements take place, which includes demolition of a decrepit building and import of soils just to make it usable. This, of course, would happen at a cost, the taxpayer's cost. The purchase is also subject to scrutiny under Florida Statute 112 point dot 313 due to the fact that the seller is a current member of the Salerno NAC amongst other reasons. SOS has five properties approximately equating to approximately one acre adjacent to the proposed property, which are more suitable for a park and are currently in the process of design for a park. We are offering the possibility of a public-private-public partnership, which would, bear with me here, with, which would possibly be a donation of some or all of that property to build a park, which will result in potential 60% more usable. Please consider this an opportunity to demonstrate your commitment to stop the waste of tax dollars.
Sir, your time is up. Thank you. Tammy Mizota is next, followed by Teri Kogle.
Tammy Mizota here. I am a member of the Save Our Salerno grassroots non-for-profit organization. Our name says it all, which is why I'm here today. We have questions about the appraised value of the property you're considering today for purchase. These concerns are already expressed, are already expressed in your emails, so I'll just say that an independent appraisal valued the property for less than the purchase price. We believe you need to take a second look at the appraisals. We also have concerns about the legality entering into the sales contract with a member of your own advisory board, the Port Salerno NAC, in violation of the state statutes. Did you know that the seller Christina Ordigo was appointed by you onto the NAC? Sorry. The appointed, and she was, as yesterday, still on Salerno NAC. That is an issue that should be explored by your legal department before you proceed. Although the plans for the Salerno Creek Linear Park are wholly within the boundaries of the Port Salerno CRA, are you aware that the Port Salerno NAC rejected those plans because they are not part of the CRA plan? If you are unsure what Commissioner Hurd has planned, then just go to your Innovation Hub Plan, which illustrates exactly the linear park, including parking areas, boardwalk, and even an amphitheater. Despite what the county staff may tell you, this is not part of the Port Salerno CRA plan. Just ask a member of the Salerno NAC if this is a plan they approved or even wanted. They will tell you no, and they have no idea how it would have wound up in the county's innovation hub. Before you ever stamp this purchase, please consider our objections and comments because we do not believe that the desires of one commissioner, no matter how powerful she may be, should take precedence over an entire community. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Teri Kogle is next, followed by Tom Pine.
Somebody once told me an old saying, "In God we trust and all others we watch." There is no doubt that Cory Crowley lacks sufficient parking needed for his proposed Port Salerno apartment complex. The county is now being asked to foot the bill to purchase property in Port Salerno at an elevated price and make improvements on that land so as to create an area for Crowley's needed parking. The state has entrusted the county commissioners to look after the health, safety, and welfare of Martin County residents. This includes a fiduciary financial duty. But here it appears the misguided priorities are again focused on the financial gains of one individual rather than the people they are mandated to protect. Shameful. We don't know if any member is using non-county emails, text messages, or other forms of communication that are being used to avoid statutory demands for disclosure regarding communications with Mr. Crowley or those he represents. But we do know negative traits are unlikely to change, even if they try to appear different. In God we trust.
Thank you. Tom Pine is next, and Mr. Pine is the last request to speak form. If you would like to address us, please fill out a request to speak form and we will be happy to hear from you.
My name is Tom Pine. I've been a resident of Martin County for over 50 years, presently living in the Jensen Beach area. If my photos could stay up while I speak, I would greatly appreciate it. Over the past few weeks, I had visited downtown areas in four counties, Martin, Okeechobee, St. Lucie, and Indian River. I started with Hope Sound and went up the line to Stewart, Jensen Beach, Fort Pierce, Indian Town, Okeechobee, Viro Beach, and Sebastian. Over the years, I have been in these towns many times. The only downtown area where the business community, also known as the Jensen Beach Chamber of Commerce, has completely taken full control of the public sidewalks for their own personal gain on Jensen Beach Boulevard, has now expanded to Indian River Drive just south of the circle headed to the island. These photos are ones I showed in June of 2023. That being said, it's past time that Martin County add a travel advisory to any tourist guides, warning visitors that Jensen Beach is not handicapped accessible for wheelchairs, walkers, or even person needing a cane. Let's do the right thing for a change and let people know in advance. E-bikes are starting to show up in the news and accidents on our roadways. There were two, there were recently two deaths, one in North Palm Beach County and one in Martin County. I walk a couple of times a week in the Jensen Rio area, and in the Rio area, I have had e-bikes come flying from behind me 20-plus miles an hour on the sidewalks that are 50 inches wide. It's breathtaking, to say the least. I might as well be walking in the roadway at times, I think it might be safer. There seems to be no rules or regulations, so it's every man and woman for themselves. Welcome to 2025. The railroad crossing on Dixie Highway in Rio still has crossing gates that are easy to circumvent. Be safe, not sorry. What you permit, you promote. What you allow, you encourage. What you condone, you own. Give us our sidewalks back now. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address us? And we'll move on to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Heatherington.
I'm all set this morning, thank you.
Commissioner Campy.
I'd just like to respond to the gentleman, Mr. Duke, that mentioned about the beach buckets. I've seen that on social media before. I think it's an excellent idea. I would request that our Parks and Rec staff, first off, you heard from Public Speaker this morning that he would fund it. I don't know what level of funding is necessary, but I'd like to coordinate it with our staff if my colleagues agree. But I would also like to expand, we don't have any beaches in Palm City, but we do have boardwalks and parks and riverfront. I think that that program is such a good idea that it would also work at Charlie Leighton Park, Charley Leighton Park, Justin Wilson Park, where if you hung, I've seen it, so if you wanted to make that your Eagle Scout project, I think our staff would love to have your assistance. So thank you very much for coming forward.
Thanks. Commissioner Capps.
Good morning. Many of you know that the Jonathan Dickinson Tower in Jonathan Dickinson State Park has not been publicly accessible for a number of months. The tower is very old and needs to be replaced. Martin County residents have missed their stunning sunsets to the west and their breathtaking views of the Indian River Lagoon and the Atlantic Ocean to the east from this tower. I spoke with Jonathan Dickinson Park Manager Scott Duncan, who told me that the officials at JD consider the tower replacement as their number-one priority and that they recently conveyed this to their district office. The district office also recently conveyed their priorities to the Park Service in Tallahassee. I would like to ask that we submit a letter to the Park Service in Tallahassee urging them to prioritize the replacement of the tower as soon as possible. Park Manager Duncan also said that we could share our ideas on the type of tower that we would prefer, and I would suggest that we recommend that the new tower resemble the old one just as closely as possible.
Excellent suggestion.
I agree.
Do you need a motion? Or your handouts are good?
I think handouts are good. Okay. We'll have a letter for the chair.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that to us.
Good.
Anything else?
I think I will mention one other thing. There are several bills that are brewing in Tallahassee that are of great concern to local government, and there's one called Senate Bill 1118 and House Bill 1209. And basically, these would allow for the expansion of development in all of the counties in the whole state of Florida for parcels of agricultural land that are deemed agricultural enclaves. And basically, the developers would be able to get administrative approvals without county commission involvement all over the state of Florida. And now, many, many bills that come forward in Tallahassee don't end up becoming law. And we don't really know for sure what kind of traction this is getting, but it's a great concern and we should also be very, we should also be very, very aware of the issue and be involved in communicating with our legislators about our disapproval of this concept because it would really virtually render our comprehensive plan null and void. And the western lands of Martin County could just get paved over. So be aware of it and be involved in every way that you can.
Also, 1118 overrides voter referenda that were approved by as much as 80% margins. Ms. Powers, you want to apprise us on any of this legislation?
I don't have any further.
Okay. Thanks for bringing it up. It's a bad bill, two bad bills. Commissioner Vargas.
Yes, I'd like to follow with Commissioner Capps. This past week, I attended the Small County Coalition Legislative Recession in Tallahassee, and I met with some of our legislatures, and I did bring up those particular bills, both the Senate and the House. It's already passed one committee, and it has to go through three committees and then the final vote with each, the Senate and the representatives. So I urge you to please contact whoever is your representative in your area and let them know of your concerns. This is true, this will supersede, anything that we do here actually will have no say. And I was advocating up there for state and federal funding for construction of the St. Lucie Inlet Operation and the maintenance, the South Jetty Construction and Hutchison Island Shoreline Protection Project, and other programs that protect Martin County's western lands for habitat, water quality, sustainable agriculture, and public recreation. I also learned a lot about growth management touring Tall Timbers Research and Learning Facility in northern Leon County.
Thank you. Mr. Donaldson.
Nothing for me, thank you.
Ms. Woods. Okay, we will proceed now with the consent agenda. There's one pull, and that's Consent 11. Can we pick that up, take that up right now? I pulled this, and it is a, it's a revision to our amusement and entertainment policy. And the reason that I pulled it was that it proposes to allow any municipality to operate one prohibited ride in our, that's on county property, that's within the municipality's jurisdictional limits. This is, this is something that has not been allowed in the past. Prohibited rides were prohibited rides, there were no exceptions. I am absolutely convinced that that's how it should remain. I don't want the additional liability, those prohibited rides, they do have failures and they're catastrophic when they happen. So I would, would, I would certainly like this prohibited rides removed from our policy. Mr. Campy.
Thank you. Can I hear from staff on their rationale for bringing the item forward?
So, good morning. George Stokis, Assistant County Administrator. Next to me is Ms. Melissa Pietruch, your senior county, senior assistant county attorney? Thank you. Yes, ma'am chair, so staff had to go back as per December 10th, the meeting in December 10th of last year. We, in order for there to be an existence of a potential Heritage Festival as proposed by the Village of Indian Town, and the rides and the amusements that they wanted to supply their public at that time, staff had identified that at least three things need to be changed. One was clearly the policy, as well as we were going to need an inter-local, and I think the other one was we were going to look at the insurance standards. The insurance standards have not changed. In fact, with this policy, we did a couple of things. Number one, we further outlined the specific permit process that was necessary. One of the biggest issues we had was we had applicants that weren't supplying, weren't following our special permit process, so we put in there a six-month requirement prior to the event. We also outlined further the municipality insurance requirements, as well as we went into further explaining the Level 2 background checks, which was under Section VI, or VI, IV, or Section 4, as well as we then further outlined the insurance requirements in greater detail, as well as the vendor's responsibilities for the events, because we felt the previous policy was lacking in all those areas. But we're more unhappy to entertain whatever this board would like us to make changes.
Questions for staff. Mr. Campy.
I had an opportunity, pardon me, I had an opportunity to speak to a couple of members of other municipalities that were appreciative of the new language and felt that as separate and distinct elected municipalities should have the ability to have that for specifically the Heritage Festival, and used an example that those same rides are used on county property during the Martin County Fair, so that it seemed consistent and that the new additional regulations and the use of verified licensed and regulated amusement companies would address that issue. So I don't personally have an issue with that, and I'd like to be able to have other municipalities be able to have control over their situations. So I would make a motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Commissioner Vargas.
I have concerns about prohibited rides. I don't think that we need to expose ourselves to this. I understand what you said about six months prior with the application, the municipality is named as additional insured with a sufficient quantity and Level 2 background checks, all required. But I think there are other, I think there are other activities. If they want to have a Heritage Festival, I've been to many of them in many cities, and I've spoken with, well, small counties numerous times. And I don't think this is, this is a time for us to be venturing into waters that, that we really don't need to. I think that we really have to hold a tight rein on this. I agree with Chairman Hurd, and I think that we need to look in this direction and stick, stick with it.
Commissioner Heatherington.
Yeah, I, the prohibited rides we're talking about are the amusement rides that we have every year at the Martin County Fair, is that? Yes. Okay, so this would allow for another municipality to host something either on one of their to host something either on one of their venues or in a county park, seeing as they have those same requirements that the other entities would have.
Ma'am Commissioner, yes, you're correct. This policy allows for municipalities to utilize county property within their municipality, and it allows them to use what we have called prohibited rides in the past. And we put in, we, staff tried to put in as many safety precautions as possible. There is clearly some risk when you allow, going from absolutely nothing to something, but we felt that there's a couple lines of defense. And also, it puts the onus on the municipality as well as the, more the onus on the municipality. But the county will, of course, also be there to check and make sure that they're tiding their i's and crossing their t's.
So the county is already allowing this kind of?
We currently do not allow this activity on our parks, but this activity does occur on the fairgrounds. Now, there are stipulations, I believe, under Florida statutes that allow fair associations to do certain things, but we don't enjoy those protections because we're not the fair association.
A question for Legal. Do you feel like, as written, that there's sufficient protection in it for Martin County and its residents?
So what we did, just so you know, the old policy in 2012 talked about insurance for the vendor. What we did here is we crafted it, saying not only does the vendor have to carry insurance, now the municipality has to also carry insurance requirements. I think we included in there like an umbrella policy. So I sat down with risk management and relations and came up with those amounts. I mean, with anything, yes, if something goes wrong, you're always open up to liability. But we've put additional insurance requirements in here as well as plans. So it's not just, hey, here's your permit. It's how are you laying out the facility? How are you going to maintain the landscaping? How are you going to fix the problems? How are you taking care of the sewage and the waste and the porta-potties? So there is more of a layout in there.
Okay. I'm satisfied that Legal has thoroughly reviewed it, and I will second Commissioner Campy's motion.
Commissioner Vargas.
Yes, is there a clause for holding Martin County harmless?
I think when they do the permit, they would get the harmlessness.
That would be a part of the agreement that we would engage with the municipality.
So this was, if I may, this is a policy on what can be done with the amusement rides. They also have to go through the Parks and Recreation Department and get a special event permit as well. This is in addition to that.
And Commissioner, I also believe that when we engage in these activities with the municipality, we have an interlocal requirement that also goes forward, which I believe there will be a hold harmless clause in that interlocal as well.
Mr. Capps.
Are we asking for the approval of this for a period of time? Or is this like a new policy that would be in existence for many years to come?
This would be the production of a new policy that would supersede the old one.
The old one was in place since 2012.
There's currently no sunset provision in it, so it would be in effect until revised.
Okay. But we could revise it again.
Absolutely.
Mr. Campy.
My final point is this. We're speaking today about rides at a park or at a festival, but I think what we're really, to me, where I'm seeing this heading is we bemoan the loss of home rule where the state legislature will tell us what, as local officials here, what we can and cannot do. But in a sense, if we are the county government and we're talking about the municipalities that are smaller city, Indian Town, Sewell's Point, Jupiter Island, we're basically doing the same thing. We think it's a legitimate reason why we would do it, but we're saying to them, we know better than you. We're telling you that you cannot have this type of situation, even if you've decided you want it, your residents want it. We know better, and we don't like when Tallahassee and Washington does that to us. So I don't want to participate in doing that to our other municipalities. Thank you.
Commissioner Vargas.
This is on county property. It's not on property owned by another entity. And I don't think that you can correlate both. And again, I've been there to speak with other counties. It's vastly different than Tallahassee dictating what we can or cannot do.
With all due respect, the Martin County is on Florida state land. Martin County is within the state of Florida, so that's how Tallahassee looks at counties, that it's operating within the state of Florida, just like these municipalities are operating within the county of Martin.
Well, okay, and I do have to respectfully disagree with you.
Makes it interesting.
That's right. Having said that, we're not talking about changing the face or the character of Indian Town. We're trying to protect ourselves. And I think, as I said before, there are many other activities that can bring people to a Heritage Festival or whatever festival they would like to put on to support their community as it grows.
That's why each of us get one vote.
There is a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed?
Opposed.
That motion passes three to one with Commissioners Vargas and Hurd.
Three to two.
What did I say?
Three to one.
Three to two with Commissioner Vargas and Hurd dissent.
Thank you, ma'am chair.
Now, can I have a motion to approve for the rest of the consent agenda?
I will move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. We will now move on to B and C 1. Are we ready to do that? Oh, yep. Voting sheets.
Yes.
We'll take that up. That's the next item.
I was wondering why all these people were here.
Yeah, me too.
No, we don't.
Yeah.
We like having you here. We postpone their agenda item till after lunch.
Yes, Ms. Gordon. This is an appointment for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board appointments.
Donna Gordon for Administration. This is for Commission Districts 2, 3, 5, I think. Yeah, 5. Commissioner Heatherington is reappointing Casey Cass. Commissioner Capps is appointing R. Douglas Smith. And Commissioner Campy is appointing Chris Pinkston. And we need two at-large members. We have really good applications. Mr. John Matheson, incumbent, received four votes. And Mr. Alan Mostoff received three votes.
Mr. Campy.
I would make a motion to accept the appointments of Casey Cass, Doug Smith, Douglas Smith, Chris Pinkston, and then the two that were just voted in, the incumbent and Mastoff and Mostoff. Thank you.
Commissioner Capps.
Just a point of clarification. The Douglas Smith that I have appointed is not the former Commissioner. As good a job as he would do, I'm sure. There are, there's another Doug Smith in Martin County.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll now take up Agenda Item Public Hearing Number 1, which is a public hearing and final assessment resolution for the Beau Rivage Water Main Municipal Service Benefit Unit. Mr. Repetti.
Good morning. Leo Repetti, Tech Service Administrator, Martin County Utilities, here for the final assessment resolution for the Water Main Assessment Project. We were here two weeks ago to discuss the initial resolution and went through our slideshow. Last week, a week after our meeting here, we met with residents with the Beau Rivage community. And I'm seeing a large number of the faces that we saw at that meeting. In all the public workshops that I've done, I've never seen a group of people that were more positive and excited about bringing water and also with this project, bringing sewer and the things that Martin County has done for and is doing for their community. Quick refresh. If approved today, the assessment would be for $9,989 on their tax bill or spread out, or spread out on their tax bill for a period of 20 years at an annual payment of $638.87. Brings us quickly to our schedule. We're here on March 25th, the final resolution with the Board of County Commissioners. Should it be awarded, approved today, purchasing will work with the lowest responsible bidder, Accurate Drilling, to move forward with the purchase order. And we would then work with them to get a start date and get this project moving forward. That concludes our presentation, and staff recommends that the board approve the final assessment resolution to create the Beau Rivage Water Main Municipal Service Benefit Unit. And I'm quite happy to answer any questions at this point.
Mr. Campy.
Thank you, Mr. Repetti. First off, welcome. I know that Beau Rivage, I was here with Commissioner Hurd when we, we didn't annex, did we annex them in?
Yes.
Annexed in our newest community, Beau Rivage from St. Lucie County. I know that it required a lot of assistance from our state legislators and heavy lifting in Tallahassee. And we were thrilled to work on that project, to have you be part of Martin County. I think this is the natural progression of that. I appreciate what Mr. Repetti said in complimenting you all because I will tell you that that, obviously, he's giving you high praise, but there are plenty of times where this type of issue divides communities and makes it very, very adversarial and can get really nasty. So for you all to understand and value and appreciate the opportunity for becoming our water system customers and of course, with the proximity to the water that you all live next to, the beauty of what you have there, to have sewer is also a tremendous opportunity for you all, but also a tremendous opportunity for us to continue to transfer, convert septic systems to our sewer system. I wish that every community felt like you do and have the opportunity that you are having here. I'm thrilled to make the motion to accept.
Any further questions?
I'll second, pending public comment. I would gladly second that motion.
I do have one request to speak for, and it's from Dr. Lewis Benson. Dr. Benson, would you like to join us?
Very famous face. Good to see you and your wife.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for hearing us. It was in 2012 that we began the process of moving from St. Lucie County into Martin County and took an act of the legislature. Unfortunately, we had good leadership at that time in Tallahassee that saw the wisdom of moving our enclave community because the only way we could get into our community was to come through Martin County. And with fire and ambulance service one mile away, we had to rely on St. Lucie County to send it several miles away from St. Lucie Boulevard. So we're very pleased to be in Martin County. We appreciate the hospitality that Martin County has shown towards us, particularly with the new bridge on Britt Road. We started in 2018 to work with the Utilities and Solid Waste Department. In 2019, there was a referendum. And at that referendum, 85% of the community voted in favor of this project. And I don't think that has changed since. I've had calls from several of the residents in the community wanting to know when we're going to get started there, anxious to have this project move forward. And by the way, I want to just go back to 2012 when we had a vote in the community. 95% of those living in the enclave community west of the Britt Road Bridge voted to move into Martin County. And so this is another extension. We feel the quality of services that you offer and the opportunity to get off the septic tanks, to get off wells that some of them are not doing particularly well, and the health of our community will be improved, and the quality of our water will be improved with this project. So as Vice President of Beau Rivage Landowners Association, we have several of our residents here today that are in support of this project, and we hope that it all goes forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Those are some impressive percentages. Would any further questions? There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Please stay for the rest of the day. Why are you laughing? I meant it. We take our break?
Oh, yeah, let's take a 10-minute break. No, thanks.